Son bet me fifty dollars that I wouldn't go down the slides.
That's funny.
But then I didn't go through the rest of it, which I didn't know until you told me.
Yeah, the underground.
The underground thing, so this summer.
Yeah.
I'm going down with my granddaughter.
I don't think it's there.
I'm here just waiting.
So this one?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, it's too late.
There's like a chili cook.
Public comments are.
Last year, last month.
I can't get over the.
Which I didn't know, I had COVID.
Better signs.
So I. So the public comments are at the end.
Right out in front of you.
Was that you that locked him up?
Maybe a quick meeting.
I slowed down.
I was like, oh, I'm just used to people like blowing.
Public comments towards.
I'm not used to that.
There's public comments at the beginning and the end.
Also, it's.
So you can get out here early.
The lights are visible at all the crosswalks.
Not related to business on the agenda, so you should be good.
Well, I didn't almost get hit, but I was walking from the library.
Correct.
Two nights ago, three nights ago. Somebody hit the snowbank, maybe like twenty five feet in front of me, like, and then just kept going.
Was that for fun or about that?
No, no, they didn't mean to do it. But if I'd been this like a little, I don't think they would have hit me even if I had been further up, but I would have been.
That sounds almost like a Jeep sort of thing.
Yeah, I would have been terrified, more terrified than I was already.
No chickens in residential.
It already, well, it's not on the books at all.
But you don't enforce it.
It's not, well, yeah, we'll talk about it.
Can't enforce anything.
I know. So with the new one, I was going to enforce that.
Good question.
That looked like, oh, now I can leave.
That's up to the town manager.
Who, do they have a new code enforcement?
Not yet.
Yeah, right now Scott is still wearing multiple hats.
Okay.
Got to be a busy life.
Yeah.
He's gonna need more.
Or does less enforcement.
Paul Freitas had at times, he'd have three or four hats. And then he'd get done work and then he'd go jump on a plow truck and plow for the night.
That's right.
Really?
Yeah, I remember that.
Paul Freitas was friggin incredible.
Sounds like a worker's comp and shirt nightmare.
I thought you did a great job.
I know.
And I hate that I know that.
I thought you did a good job.
You got injured.
Well, it felt so.
That on tonight's agenda?
But you're also like.
Got a couple on Zoom. On the back.
You know, the most expensive risk level class for his entire. So.
We will be very soon, at this time.
I was totally out a while ago. I've actually enjoyed. So maybe I'll hang around. I don't know.
Walked the campus.
Right.
And off campus, they pay taxes. They're a separate entity, they're a separate corporation. Let me tell them they didn't. What's they do?
Well, I think, I think we're gonna reach a gun probably at six, six thirty two. So I'll call our meeting to order of February second, twenty twenty three. And I will read the roll. Rebecca.
I'm here.
Phil.
Here.
Neil is absent. Mike.
Here.
And Mark.
Here.
Susan.
Here.
Myself, I am present. And alternates, Zach Terrell is not present. Michael Bouchard is not present and Peter Julia is not present. This is a pretty quiet room tonight, especially after last night.
Yeah, that was a busy one.
Are you complaining?
No. Up next is the review of minutes from our January nineteenth meeting. Thank you, Joseph, for the very thorough, long minutes to read through.
Yes, I agree.
And it was a long, complicated meeting, so it was fully appropriate.
Still fair phrasing or documentation. Make a motion to accept the.
You can make a motion, yeah, no, you can make a motion.
Discuss the motion after I make it.
Of course, I know, I was hoping to beat you to it, but yeah.
Oh, that's fine. I hold my motion. Go ahead.
Did you want to accept them or did you want to approve them? Is that the same thing?
Usually you approve them, I think.
I mean, we know what you mean.
Go for it.
Yeah.
Well, I just wanted to say, a couple, like, as usual, unlike being an English teacher and noticing the little. On page, oh, there are no page numbers on.
It's there.
Are there?
It's not on the first page.
Oh, page four, here, up there, on page four. Of four lines down the last paragraph. It says, and the only advise he had was to consider advice.
Okay.
Oh, sorry.
Good catch. It's a good catch.
Wait, I underlined something. Oh, and online, page five, on the continuation of the public hearing. And maybe this phrasing, this struck me as a little odd. Perez advised that Hiltz had left a voicemail this morning stating that new information was not for presentation to the board. Wasn't that ready for presentation to the board?
Ready, probably, or ready or available.
Yeah, I'm being like the total English teacher here, but. I think that. Oh, one last one, actually, last page. A member of the Conservation Commission asked about the if the Riverside landing. You know, this is a long document and it's only a few seconds. But nothing substantive, just a little.
Yeah.
Paper sort of thing.
Little sticker.
So I'm sorry.
Well, they're on the record forever, so it's important we catch these now. Where they're preserved in the basement for the next hundred years.
Why does John read these things?
So I second it. I'll, I'll motion again to approve, or to, sorry, approve the minutes as amended.
And you're a second thing. And is there any further discussion? All right, all in favor?
All right.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? All right, the minutes are approved. Are there any public comments not related to business on the agenda? Yes, please come up and identify yourself and.
Don Smilak, Broadway Street. Couldn't attend the public meetings because of COVID. But I understand it. Pretty much, I agree with it. Inasmuch, though, I understand that right now, there is a zoning ordinance, no chickens in a residential zone. That technically, or I won't say technically, but whatever it is, isn't enforced at this time, or hasn't been enforced.
I believe, I have to check this again. I believe technically, we do not currently allow them. So if they're not allowed in the ordinance, they are by default prohibited. I don't know that we actually have an.
I don't think it's mentioned.
Yeah.
It's not mentioned by chickens, it's agriculture that's not allowed in the single family.
Agriculture is not allowed in the single family residential, thank you for that.
Okay.
And animal husbandry, I think, is what the second thing that says.
So if it's not enforced now.
Yeah.
Under the new zoning, if it passes. And all that stuff, how are you going to enforce that?
Well, technically, the planning board is not going to enforce.
Oh, I know the planning board. Michael, go out and take care of it.
I mean. Part of my personal feeling about this is that by, and it's often how things play out, by having. If there's a lot of people who are already not conforming with or complying with the ordinance, it's difficult to enforce that. Especially if it's, if some of those people aren't really causing a problem. By actually allowing certain uses and bringing a whole lot of people into compliance. It makes it a little bit easier to take those who are out of compliance and enforce that. And so you're not going about against a whole lot of people and looking for a whole lot of people, you're looking for maybe somebody who has a rooster. And it would be easier to figure out and enforce. And it wouldn't seem as unequal then as not going after everybody who's not complying with that. I, it's not a great answer necessarily, but I think in practice, that's kind of.
That was it, it's like, I know, well, my next door neighbor's got like twenty, twenty five.
Okay.
This goes through. Now you're saying they can only have ten.
Yeah.
What happens to that?
You know, if nobody complains, it's possible that nothing would happen. And it would just go unnoticed and it would continue. If someone complains, then it would be on the radar and that might be enforced.
Right.
In the same way that, sorry, I saw my kid's hand up, but Mike had his hand up, so.
Go ahead, Rebecca.
To say if someone had a horse in the single family residential, which I think is also not allowed. Or pig, you know, three pigs or something like that. If, if someone complained or the code enforcement officer were to find, to, you know, you'd have to get in compliance.
They'd have to get in compliance.
Yeah. Now, if you have a pet pig in your own house, that's a good question, since people do have pet pigs.
Or a service pig.
That was, that was my concern is how does it get into compliance or who takes care of that?
I think it would require.
A complaint.
A complaint, unless it was something like really egregious that like, you know, with this obvious.
Like an attack rooster.
Yeah. Otherwise, you'll probably require a complaint. And if they had twenty five and nobody cared, nobody complained, they could probably continue to have twenty five. On the other hand, if someone does complain, then.
Then it'd have to be looked at.
Yeah. I think in practice, that's what would happen. Yeah, Mike.
So I think there's more teeth right now than there ever was. And we started to allow chickens because there was a scare with the eggs. Sal, Sal.
Salmonella?
Is that, there was a big scare and everybody started getting chickens. And the town just overlooked, but there was nothing to distinguish between the females and the males. And so there was no real rules at all, and at least now.
You've got, you've got some teeth.
Definitely parameters that they have to fit within.
Right.
So just let the town know. And I'm sure now they, they have something to follow.
Right.
And unless it's, of course, all contingent on it passing.
Contingent on its passing.
Yes.
Now, if it doesn't pass.
Then technically, you're not supposed to have chickens.
In the single family residence.
In a single.
In a single family residence. And so if there's a complaint, it would have to be followed up.
It should, although I can't speak for enforcement.
Right, yeah, I understand.
I think it was more, I mean, it wasn't so much to add regulatory teeth to it as it was to allow for a use that's, that can be actually not disruptive. And something that people are doing anyway, so it'll allow for it in a way that doesn't, doesn't degrade the neighborhood experience.
Right. And then when someone is degrading the neighborhood experience and you go and try to enforce that particular case. It also doesn't look like, well, what about the other cases? That we're not being a nuisance because we're allowing them now. If they're within the ten limit and all that kind of stuff, yeah. Yeah, so.
Okay.
Ultimately, we have no power over enforcement, but that's kind of.
I understand that, yeah. Just wanted to make a comment.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. So good night. You can stay. You can do whatever you like.
Hopefully, we'll all be out here soon.
It sounded like you might be, so I don't know.
I got a fire going at the house.
Well, enjoy that on this cold night.
I'm gonna go home and enjoy it. Thank you.
See you, Don.
Thank you.
Sure if they want to make a public comment, but there are two members of the public on Zoom.
Yeah, I was just gonna ask if, I noticed a couple of names up there. Are there any other public comments on Zoom? You can unmute yourself and speak. If not, just keep on listening. Hello? No?
There's, there's no comments from me. I was having trouble getting on, sorry about that.
Okay, thank you. All right. Have there been any communications received, Joseph?
I do have one update. The. Stormwater asset management program, we had at this board, a presentation from Justin Skelly of DPC Engineering, who spoke about. Sort of getting a, an asset management program developed for the town's stormwater drainage assets. And they, you know, they all spoke very highly of the feedback from this board and from the public, so that was great. But I have a little update of sort of how the work is going. So there's GIS staff have been working on updates to their sort of static mapping. They've also done some sort of live mapping. And they're working right now to identify a schedule and program of field investigation. So field data collection, supplemental GPS coordinates, field condition assessments, really refining the data. That might be a point right now, it'll be a point with a lot more information behind it. So they're looking forward to that, particularly once the weather is a little more conducive to field work. But it's all gonna be sort of rolled together here into a dat, big database. For, you know, use in the town's future, future planning for, you know, stormwater needs. And then ultimately, there'll be another public informational meeting, but that's still probably a ways out. But I did want to share that update with the board of how that is progressing. Since they did, you know, meet with this board and they, you know, shared their appreciation for the board hosting them and giving such good insight.
All right, thank you. All right, up next, reports of committees, beginning with the HOP grant committee. And I don't think I need to necessarily explain that to anyone tonight. So we had our kickoff meeting with Barrett Planning, Judy Barrett and a couple others from Barrett Planning. And it was our first group meeting with the committee and Barrett Planning since having chosen Barrett Planning and them, you know, finalizing the deal with us. And we discussed a bunch of different stuff. We had a really great overview of the process, I think. We talked about the types of tools they would be using for outreach and getting information. And we'll talk a little bit more about that later in the meeting tonight, community meetings, various stakeholder meetings, surveys and so forth. We talked about how, what kind of tasks needed to be completed on both sides from the committee and from Barrett Planning to help keep moving us forward. And we are, I think, in a pretty good place, right on track probably for where we should be right now in the process. We talked about our schedule for spring and into the early summer and what kind of meetings that would entail. And we have a good amount of kind of firm, firming up of that schedule at this point, which I want to get to when we talk about our scheduling for twenty twenty three in the next part of our meeting. So we'll kind of leave that for now, but we did have a good discussion about that. And, you know, otherwise, you know, we'll keep reporting back on progress and as you'll see, there'll be room for the planning board as well to be involved in this process. Pretty soon.
March, early March.
Yeah, so we'll get, we'll get to the schedule, but yeah, starting in March, basically, yeah. And, yeah, so we'll return to that in a few minutes. Are there any other committee updates? Okay. So next up is new business and so basically, we're starting a new year. We've been through January now and our. Zoning amendment process and thank you all for the hard work to get that through and we'll see how that turns out in March. For, so for the rest of the year, we have to kind of figure out what our priorities are and how, how our schedule is gonna come together. And I think the best place to begin is with the, the HOP grant scheduling. And so a decision was made. It was suggested by Barrett Planning and we didn't disagree on the committee. That the planning board would be involved in certain steps in this process. And we did our best to keep it in line with our current planning board's schedule. There are a couple of places where that is changed and we'll talk about those in a minute. And even where it is changed, though, it's not like, we were trying hard not to kind of add burden to the planning board. So to try to, even if we did choose like a different Thursday, for example, then we'd cancel the other Thursday to kind of keep things equitable. And hopefully have enough lead time that you can kind of make sure it fits in your schedule as best as possible. So. I'm just gonna run through the schedule here and.
Do we have copies of this?
I do not have copy, I can pass around my copy of the schedule. I don't think we have printed copies to pass out. It would be probably a good idea, though, maybe.
Yeah, we can get it.
Maybe for our next package.
Yeah, definitely.
Are there any critical dates that we need to know?
I'm gonna go through them right now, like every one of them.
I just don't take verbal, verbal instruction very well.
And hopefully, I guess Dan will put some of these soon onto the website as well.
Yep, that is certainly the, the next, one of the next priorities for us to get with Dan and get that up. We have talked to him and, you know, soon there will be a dedicated HOP page on the town website with key dates, you know, meeting information. And, you know, any additional information that the, you know, that needs to be shared, that'll be all sort of centralized very soon.
All right, so beginning in March, we decided that we have a March second meeting and that's going to be canceled. So we have a scheduled planning board meeting on March second to be canceled. And instead, we're gonna. Move that back to the following week. So what's happened the following week is Barrett Planning is coming to town for a three day visit as a team and from the eighth to the tenth. And so on the ninth, which is exactly a week later than our scheduled meeting, we're gonna have a meeting with the planning board instead. And that will include a meeting with Barrett Planning. So she'll be visiting us at our planning board meeting on the ninth.
Is that a, what, so Thursday?
It's also a Thursday, yeah. Two and seven, yeah, nine.
I thought there was a reason why we couldn't have it on the Thursday.
I think the next meeting with the planning board is on a Wednesday. I mean, not the next joint meeting with Barrett, Barrett Planning.
Yeah, there was a conflict.
There was some kind of conflict, I can't remember what it was, or maybe they even couldn't make it. See, April sixth, which I believe is a Thursday, I could double check that.
Before, before we move on, I feel like this, every year, we run into something with the town, you know, some sort of budget thing or something right before town meeting. Where we end up waiting because there's some sort of deliberative session. So we should just make sure that we're not, maybe you've already done that on the town calendar, but we should just make sure.
I think we were looking at the calendar as we were in, in the meeting. I know I was, I mean, it's possible I overlooked something because a lot of things were happening.
Well, maybe we missed it by not doing it on the, I feel like it's always the meeting right before town meeting where something happens and we. We're all waiting for something to end and it's happened a number of times.
Sorry, I was interrupting. I remember looking at the online calendar specifically for that week with all the extra meetings. And unless something got foibled in the process, I believe that was free. But we can double check that just in case. What's that?
Did you say foibled?
I did. Is that an okay word?
No, that's great.
I think the only consideration with that one, when we looked at it, was that it might, we might look at a different space such as the library meeting room. Due to, there was, I think the Energy Commission had this room booked.
Yeah, we were talking about that, yeah.
So I do think that was, you know, we've used the library meeting room for other.
That was the ninth?
That was the ninth.
Okay, yeah, so I do remember this conversation now, yeah.
Energy Commission meeting, that was the.
So you're right, yeah.
So in March, are we meeting the ninth and then the sixteenth? We're gonna get back on the regular schedule.
So yeah, well, we'll meet again at our, at our regular meeting time for the, for the third week, yeah. Yeah, so for the ninth, we'll probably be in the library or something, we talked about that, yeah.
And town meeting is on the fifteenth?
Fifteenth, I think the fourteenth is the vote and the fifteenth is the meeting. Is that right? Busy a couple of weeks.
And then one of the pieces with that was, you know, I, I think it was the intention to keep all of the meetings where the board would hear applications the same. So no deadlines were changed for applicants, I think that's part of why.
That makes sense.
Like the sixteenth stays the same.
Except for maybe July, which I think we moved some things around more, I think, or did we?
If I remember right from July.
Talking about it, maybe, actually, maybe we went back to the original event, but.
I think July, the first, the work session is moved from the first Thursday to the last Thursday of July.
So we'll get there, but yeah. So April sixth, and you can double check me on that, is that a Thursday or is that a Wednesday?
It is.
So April sixth, we have a community meeting. So April 6th, we have a community meeting. And the goal, I don't know if we finalized this yet, but the goal was potentially to have it at Plymouth Elementary in the auditorium or something, so we can get lots and lots of people in there to, or Jim, whatever, to public outreach and like table, tables where we can workshop with people and talk to people. And so the goal there was to have members of the committee and the planning board facilitating those conversations instead of having our regular meeting. So I think it's still an official meeting of the planning board, we're all together doing planning. But we would be facilitating these conversations rather than doing our normal business.
And we'll be planning what we're doing on the 9th for that?
I imagine she'll give us some guidance on the 9th about how that'll, and we can certainly check in with her to see about that. Actually, I'll write myself a note.
We've also, when we did the master plan sessions, we held them at, some of them at the senior center.
Okay. That's another good, good large space. If the others- Have you tried scheduling this yet, Joseph? Do you know? Or?
I've spoken to Scott about it, but we haven't locked it in yet. So we can do that probably this and next week if fall is good.
So this is not gonna necessarily involve us directly, except insofar as we might want to get the town out to actually participate. But from April 13th to May 5th, there's going to be an online survey for people to complete. Again, we don't have to like be there for a meeting there, but like, it might be, you know, just get the word out. Again, not necessarily crucial for the planning board, just so you know, though. The anticipated completion date for the housing needs analysis is April 30th. A zoning audit report is estimated to be completed by May 30th. And then going into- Wait a second, did I, did I actually transcribe this wrong? Hold on.
What was the title? What's gonna, what's available on May 30?
Oh, the zoning audit report.
The zoning audit report.
Exciting title name.
Okay. I was noticing here that I wrote June 1st meeting is canceled. I think that's actually the July 1st meeting that's canceled, right?
Let me look back at my notes, but I think you're actually, I think your note is right because I thought we-
Or June, or is June 1st is canceled for something else?
June 1st is a Thursday, July 1st is not.
Okay, so it must have been June 1st. Why was that canceled?
My, my notes here, that the first meeting in June, the first planning board work session was to be canceled because Barrett would want to meet with the planning board on June 29th. So it would, instead of being the first Thursday for a work session, it would be the last Thursday in June. And then the, the business meeting-
Oh, yeah, I'm getting June and July confused. Yeah, sorry. Yeah. So June 1st is canceled. June 7th, we're meeting with Barrett Planning.
June 7th?
And that's, that's a Wednesday.
Is it everyone or is that just the top?
Wait a second. So June 1st is, is canceled.
June 7th, which is not a Thursday.
Yeah, June 7th was another community meeting, a big community.
Oh, community meeting, yeah, yeah. That's a community, I'm sorry. So we'll get this all on the calendar and out to everyone.
Yeah, I think that would be helpful to have it-
And then, even, I'm gonna confuse us reading my own notes. Yeah, so June 1st is canceled. June 7th is a community meeting that includes the planning board in the process, just like the April 6th one. And then there's a planning board meeting as regularly scheduled on the 15th. And so June's gonna be a little busy. We, we decided to also have a planning board meeting on June 29th. However, that would replace the early July planning board meeting, which would be canceled. So that's, that would eliminate conflict if anybody's traveling for July 4th. And so we just figured we should push that back to June.
So we still have the 6/14 meeting?
Or 15?
6/15.
15.
6/15, sorry.
6/15 meeting, we have-
6/1 is canceled, 6/15, 6/29, but can't, and then canceled July 6th.
Yes. And June 7th, we have a community meeting.
And there's nothing, no funny business in May?
No.
Perhaps May.
We can do silly things if we'd like.
I can, I'll throw something out that we talked about at our last meeting, which was in minutes, but-
Yeah.
We should probably schedule a joint meeting with the ZVA.
It's on here.
You got it, okay.
Yeah, but yeah, that is on my, on my radar here, yeah.
All right.
And just looking forward, I don't know exactly for scheduling what, when she might want to meet with us going into later summer or fall. But what we do know, she hopes, she hopes, she kind of has to, actually, have our amendments to our regulations in by December 1st, which gives us a pretty quick turnaround in preparing them and preparing ourselves to understand them. And then going to public hearings the following month. And she will also, or she, they, will be helping us with kind of outreach going into town meeting in the spring or late, late, late winter. And that's a lot.
So we'll get a calendar of everything included, can we?
So I, I think what we're, we can, we can get you a calendar, like print it out.
I just want a list.
And-
If I could, that'd be helpful.
We should probably even simplify this one rather than sending this one out. And you can have this one too, but it might just be nice to have a little quick one-page list or half-page list.
I mean, I don't know, can't speak for everyone else, but there's just a lot of dates. So it'd be nice just to see all the dates, including our regular work sessions and our regular meetings.
Yep.
Agreed.
And then they get them on the, on the website calendar as well.
Looking forward to three meetings in June. I just wanna state that right now.
At least we have one off it.
You don't have to go to the community meeting.
Leave it for the rest of us.
We could reschedule the last June meeting to right next to the 4th of July, if you prefer.
No, no, it's all good.
We'll be wrapping up the prospect, and that'll be better.
That's right. Spring sports.
I also think, just as we look at our schedule too, just let's think about, you know, since it is pretty busy, like, you know, if we have a, a light work session, or, you know, let's not make extra work for ourselves and give ourselves a little time off.
So John, I have a question.
Yes.
So if we're looking at December coming up with potential zoning changes.
Yes.
And this is an 18-month process.
Mm-hmm.
So what goes on the last six months if it culminates with changes? I guess that's March, so we're 13 months.
I mean, the way that the timeline worked out for the grant itself is it lasts through, I guess, early July, is it? Or right around there?
Yeah, so it's 12 months plus the three.
But it's, that's not, it's kind of, it's kind of a dead time in terms of planning. So, I mean, there might be follow-up for like looking forward, but if town meeting is in mid-March, that's when everything has to be done for. And so really, the process will be wrapping up by then. And basically, we're paying them for certain services. And as long as they get their services that we asked for them done, then everything's legitimate, even if they're done slightly before the full timeline of the grant. Yeah. Because like it, March is just a much more sensible time to end, given our calendar, than like June or July would be.
Like, do you think that, given the, the fact that we're gonna be having community meetings through the summer, are you concerned about the schedule?
No, no. Because we're, one of the things that we're planning on doing with the HOP grant, meet, HOP grant is to meet with stakeholder groups. So we may be meeting with two or three people one day, two or three another groups of people besides the community meetings. So I really think there's gonna be a lot of community involvement.
Mm-hmm.
So I'm very, very pleased with, it just seems like it's coming quick.
Yeah.
And the group of people that we've all chosen, she has kind of clustered them into businesses, residences, people who own apartments. And she would like to put them together as a group and meet with them.
Those are stakeholders.
Kind of eliminates, kind of eliminates a single individual one-on-one, which takes a lot longer.
And those are the stakeholders, which, and we'll also have the broader outreach to the, you know, larger community.
Nice to have professionals-
Yeah, it's very nice.
Spending time doing this.
Almost necessary.
Yeah, so back to the joint ZVA meeting. So I was looking at our schedule and May seemed to be the most sensible time to do it. Because I think last year, we did it right after town meeting at the, like, so it would be April. But given our schedule, April's schedule, we just can't really do that. And so the work session in May, or their May meeting, I think last time we had it on a ZVA meeting night, right? What is-
I think that's why I missed it. We canceled ours and met with them. And I totally spaced it. I was getting ready for the planning board meeting. I was like, oh, it was last week.
So I think, I think ideally, we, we aim for May, and it could be our work session. Alternatively, when, do you, you know when the ZVA meeting is in May?
They don't meet unless they have a hearing, do they?
No, they don't typically meet unless, but I'm sure they could meet for a joint meeting if they, you know, were so inclined.
And Dave seemed to be in favor of a meeting.
Well, sorry, may I ask?
Yeah, go ahead.
So I'd like to know what our goals are for this, because, you know, it seems like we're really hot, housing-focused this year with the HOP grant stuff.
Yeah.
I mean, I guess we need to also determine like what other administrative changes we might be making to the zoning ordinance. Or are we gonna put, push pause on all that stuff while we're, we've got this other extensive thing going on?
In a few minutes.
Okay. But, because honestly, I found the joint set, I mean, the zoning board member that was here two weeks ago wanted a joint meeting, and he said we haven't been doing it for years, but we did one last year. I didn't find it super productive. It, it seemed like we were getting more of a, you know, private session with the planning board as, you know, the zoning board as private, you know, their regular concerns about we need more childcare and what about, I can't remember.
There were a lot of issues.
Mobile home parks and-
It sounded like people just wanted to be heard on these issues that they can't normally talk about at the ZVA meeting.
So, you know, if, I guess it just depends on what our agenda is. And I'm certainly open to meeting with them, but I just wanna make sure we have a little more of a clear agenda and clear guidance on what we're asking them for. Because otherwise, I just don't think it's the best use of either board's time.
So I, I, I hear you completely on that. And I was also thinking about this. And I think it is a good idea. And it has been suggested to hold these annual meetings with the ZVA to kind of touch base. I do like the idea. Last meeting kind of sprawled and I might take some personal responsibility. I think with the first meeting I was hosting was a joint meeting, I was like-
Yeah. No, no, there's, there's, there's some, there are some complications there. And I'm not opposed to meeting at all. I just wanna make sure it's a little structured, more structured.
And I was actually going to ask, and like, you all, like, what would you wanna get out of a joint meeting with the ZVA that could be beneficial to both sides of this meeting? And not necessarily thinking we have to answer that and finalize that tonight, but at least have it on our radar of something to think and talk about of, assuming we have this meeting, where it seems like, I think it is a good idea, and it has been suggested as a regular occurrence. Yeah, going in with a little bit firmer sense of what we wanna get out of it is a great idea.
We should ask David. He might have some ideas since he's-
Well, we should, but both boards should talk about this and come up with some agenda items of things to have a more focused discussion on than the kind of sprawl that happened.
It was a rambly conversation that talked more about, you know, things that we wanna see in the town as opposed to where I think we lean, can lean on the zoning board is, where is the zoning ordinance not working for them to do their job?
But I, I think part of, I mean, but exactly what you said, I think is also part of the benefit of this meeting. And that could have been articulated better last time. The fact that they came to a joint session with the planning board and were, and were like, we want this, 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 and this in this town, I think also points to the fact that although they understand planning business very well, they may have a bit of a misconception about what the planning board actually does. To even like, kind of look to us to say, we want this stuff in our town. And it might be a good opportunity for some of us to kind of, kind of better sense of what we do as boards.
I mean-
That shouldn't be like a long part of the meeting, but like, I think there was a little bit of a misconception going into that meeting of what we actually do. And I think-
I think that's pretty broad, though. I think for, for anyone, you know, whether it be zoning board or just general public. And I think the concept of what planning boards do is sometimes off.
Yeah.
And I mean, yeah, I think the only tool we really have in terms of guiding development is the zoning ordinance. And it's not even, that's, I mean, there's really no opportunity to encourage anything. We can just create a structure that, where things are allowed, and then hope that the interest of businesses is sufficient to fill in those opportunities that we presented. So, I mean, there is, I mean, I think there may be some role for the planning department to do some kind of business development.
Mm-hmm.
But I think that, I know that the planning department's been busy lately.
So I, I, I guess I'm thinking, our March, I'm looking at our HOP schedule again. So on March 9th, we have a work session. It does include a meeting with Barrett Planning. I just wonder if we might take a few minutes at the March meeting to bring some ideas together about what we might want to see in a joint meeting and reach out to the zoning board to see what they would wanna get out of this. And to make sure that we all have something we wanna get out of this, that we can actually define.
Yes.
Has Barrett mentioned meeting with the zoning board or talking with them at all? Do you recall?
I do not recall that being a thing. And, I mean, the planning board seems like the more logical board to meet with, with, if you have limited time.
I don't really wanna mention it.
I mean, the ZVA really only has two functions, they can grant variances or special exceptions.
And then they can deal with appeals for, for us.
Oh, yeah. And also for building code appeals, right?
But as far as like changes to regulations go, that's us. And that's, that's what we're looking to her to suggest. So we're the more obvious point of contact. I think if she had all the time in the world, she'd probably love to talk to the zoning board. But I think given, given limited time, it makes more sense to talk to us.
So, I think it might be really helpful. Yeah, I agree with, you know, the zoning board's involvement with the HOP grant. To me, that it doesn't make a ton of sense. It would be great if somebody could go to the, one of a planning board member could go to a zoning board meeting. I think it might be more meaningful, instead of coming from Joseph, but come from one of us. Give them the schedule of all these things and make sure they know when all these events are, that their input, as people who have their eyes on the zoning ordinance a lot, I think it would be really helpful. So they at least have this stuff. And then think about, if we're, as we're preparing for this meeting, to really look through the zoning ordinance, what doesn't make sense to them? Where are their inconsistencies? Where are the special criteria, or special exception criterion insufficient? Where are they, where is it not working? Is there any type of variance that they're issuing a lot that, you know, that that's something that we should think about addressing? I can't think of an example, but something we might wanna address in the zoning ordinance where someone, they're always getting variances. Maybe that's something that we should think about, having it be an allowed or special exception use or something like that, that, that is, got a little more structure to its, instead of just issuing a variance. Do you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, no, I'm laughing a little bit because I had those like almost exact questions written down at our last meeting that we had with them. And I think I even tried to ask them, and it just didn't really go there.
Yep.
Maybe that's a good thing. Like, maybe the thing to do is-
But maybe just-
Reach out to the chair and say, you know, these are the things we're wondering about, but, you know, do you have other agenda items you'd like to add for a joint meeting?
Yeah.
They can, that might provide them with a forum to-
But give them-
See discussion.
Give them those questions beforehand so they can talk about it at their own meeting first.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Who is the chair of the zoning board now?
David King.
Okay.
Or was the chair who asked us for the meeting?
Well, he asked, he did, I mean, yes.
Requested.
He requested it, not realizing that we had met last year. We had done it last year.
Well, there was that too. But I mean, he did mention the annual meeting sort of thing. That was an understanding, yeah.
I, I, I am all for meeting. I just want it to be productive.
No, I totally, totally agree. And I share your frustration with last time. No, I totally, totally agree. And I share your frustration with last time. And whatever falls on me as facilitator.
You know, there's, none of, no part of me is being like, Donnie, it's all your fault. Not saying that at all.
At some point in the next year, we'll have to schedule CIP meetings again.
Oh, yeah.
And my availability is not going to be as flexible as it was last year.
Okay.
So we'll see how that works. Maybe we can do more of it online having, having done, done it recently with the same staff.
So beyond that, we have our various documents and regulations. So the, the HOP stuff is going to keep us pretty busy, obviously. So these are the questions like what do we want to actually do beyond this sort of stuff and so this is a master plan, which we're about halfway through at this point in terms of like a life cycle. And I don't know that we want to do a deep dive there, but it might help to kind of refresh ourselves, especially going into meetings with the public for the HOP process. And I would say, you know, as you're refreshing yourself on this and, and refreshing yourself on the documents to be ready for meetings with the public and actually being able to translate this into like non, like planning language with the public. If you notice anything that like stands out, take notes. And we can make note of it at a meeting and like put it on our agenda, even if for like next year or something. Otherwise, this. Rebecca?
So you keep going.
Oh, there's a question of zoning amendments and obviously a lot of this is going to be focused on housing and a lot of this is going to be coming from our consultant Barrett Planning this year. We were also talking about, we pulled one of our parking amendments which could relate to housing or not, depending on the context. We were looking at the parking regulations and there's definitely room for some fixing going on there. And so there's a question and of A, do we want to try to tackle that? B, is any of this going to come up? I know it's going to come up in conversations. Is it going to come up in whatever Barrett Planning actually suggests to us? And how much space do we have on our plate to do this? Things will lighten up after June, I believe. But so I'm just, I don't know if anybody has any immediate comments. We can just think about that too and kind of, I think there's definitely some stuff to be cleaned up in the parking and
It seemed like we had three property owners from the Village Commercial who had rental units who had very different opinions as to what they needed to provide and what they did not need to provide. So.
And certainly if we did change anything with parking, we're never going to make everybody happy.
No, but maybe it's just nice to clarify.
The inconsistencies, yeah.
Exactly what the policy is.
And there is a lack of clarity there.
Couple of questions.
Yeah.
Number one is, so after June, that's when we stop doing our work with Barrett?
You know, I don't know if that's really, that's how far we've mapped out and I don't really see that there's probably going to be a whole lot of need for a lot of public engagement with us. Actually, I don't know.
Yeah.
The public engagement part is probably going to like die off at that point until this, until winter, when we have to start getting ready for actually bringing this stuff to the public for hearings and then a vote. But as far as her consulting with us as she's drafting amendments, I imagine there might be some room there for meeting with us. None of that is mapped out at this point. I don't know.
Under task, on the, on one of the tasks
Yeah.
From her earlier draft as well, you know, for the drafting amendments task, she does specify, you know, wanting to do public meetings with town boards to review drafts and one in-person, community-wide meeting and a three-reading draft process. So.
I would just guess.
Yeah, I don't know if, how much might have been a factor too of just not wanting to necessarily schedule the second half of the year until seeing, sort of getting further into the first half.
That makes sense. And it would make sense that we discussed these amendments at meetings even before they're finalized, as we would normally do anyway.
And, okay, my next question is what kind of reporting are we getting from Barrett on the public engagement stuff? And the survey? Is it just, is this information that's going to get funneled to us just going to, pertain to housing? Or is it going to, because I'm sure there's going to be some questions that pertain to a lot of our work?
I mean, it is focused on housing, but you can't talk about housing without talking about some of these other issues. And even if she doesn't bring it up, other people are going to bring it up. And one thing she did clarify that it was less of a quantitative statistical tool and more of an outreach tool and kind of qualitative information gathering tool. But beyond that, I mean, I haven't seen the survey. She hasn't, I don't think, written it yet probably. She'll probably do that after she talks to more people, I'm assuming. She probably, you know, she's done this before. I'm sure she has like standard stuff she asks.
Yeah, I'm just curious because I feel like that's a tool for us beyond just the, the housing grant.
Yeah.
Stuff. But just knowing that we're going to probably continue our work, we'll be reviewing drafts. I think, I would think that if we want to tackle something like parking, sure, we can start talking about that, but realizing we might not be getting to that.
Final space in time for.
In time for town meeting and I think that's fine.
Doesn't mean we can't talk about it.
Right, but I also think, I feel like for us, unless we have any administrative changes that are necessary for the zoning ordinance, I think we put all of our eggs in the, the HOP grant basket for as far as zoning ordinance changes goes.
I would agree.
And we, and we might get some good insights about parking issues from the housing study.
Now, is, is there any work on the site plan regs and the subdivision regs as part of this?
You guys are doing wonderful tonight. I like, like seeing my next move.
There shouldn't be site, well, I mean, I guess there might be multifamily.
Yeah, yeah, multifamily, yeah.
So, oh, I mean, affected by the HOP grant, you mean?
Yeah, I mean, the recommendations of the HOP grant.
So.
Might recommend changes to site plan regulations if it deals with multifamily housing.
So I, slightly different than that, having to do with site plan regulations. There was an oversight this fall that the, we didn't get our feedback from the attorney on our site plan regulations. And we have gotten them at this point and they're fairly minor. And there are a few changes suggested. They're fairly minor. They're not really substantive changes. It's mostly just small changes in wording to make certain any kind of loosenesses kind of tied up, you know, that loose, like improper wording could have. And the only other thing that was like, that wasn't just a clarification of wording, I think, was a, it was a change from bond to letter of credit, I believe, right, in one, in one of the sections.
So we basically need to make those changes and hold a hearing and then redo our, okay. I'd say let's do that as soon as we can.
Yeah.
If they're not administrative, let's just get it done.
Yeah, it shouldn't be a complicated process.
That's exciting. But our subdivision regs, I think, need to move to the top of the.
Yeah, so the subdivision regulations.
Yeah. I think that's maybe the more, aside from the housing, the stuff that we're already doing, the subdivision regs, I think are probably the more important thing for us to work on.
Since we just did the site plan review regulations, there's certain language that can just kind of get copy pasted right over into the subdivision regulations. There's obviously other pieces that cannot. So while that's still fresh, it is an opportune time to do that. And as we have seen in the last several months, A, they haven't been updated in decades at this point. And it's always a good idea to update them, keep them current, keep them current with changing standards and RSAs and everything else. And so there's reasons there to update them. And also June, who is part-time now, has said that this is one of the things that she could do in her capacity right now is help us through that process. I think for us to take it on as ourselves without a lot of help from staff, while we're doing the HOP also would be a lot. But we do have an offer from staff to help us through that process.
I'm willing to put in some extra time outside of meetings and I can work directly with June on that to help prepare some of that stuff if that, if that helps at all.
I think, yeah. So we feel probably, so I guess it's looking like probably zoning amendments. If something comes up that looks like it needs to be fixed and is a straightforward thing, we can take a look at that, but not to tackle anything too big. Could be at the housing issues.
John, do you think that Judy is going to look at subdivision process as well as zoning?
You know, I mean, subdivision obviously affects housing. On the other hand, the parts that would most affect our ability to meet the needs of the public are in the zoning ordinance. And there might be some changes she might want to suggest to the regulations. But I imagine from what she's already said and from just like knowing how the process works, the place where we can really incentivize housing is in our zoning ordinance more than our regulations.
I think a lot of the legwork that needs to happen with the subdivision regs is just, I mean, it's, our subdivision regs are now, they're 20 years old.
Can I make a, and I, I would agree, go ahead.
They're 20 years old and I think we're, we're missing some things that we need to have in there now. And so I think a lot of the work is just bringing it up to, you know, standards of this century, so.
If I could make a suggestion, it would be great early on in the process before us thinking that we have all the answers. Maybe bringing in like someone from Mike McGinley's camp and Kevin French or a few people that are in the business that are dealing it on the other side of the table and get their input before we start talking about it. And maybe they could identify things that are really weak and things that we do really well. And maybe suggestions going forward, starting at that spot first.
I'm feeling a little split on that. On the one hand, that kind of outreach can be very beneficial. And it's always good to get, to hear more voices. At the same time, we have a lot on our table and I have a sense probably, Joseph, I don't know if you can speak to this perhaps, I mean, you probably hear from these individuals on a regular basis. And a lot of it is not about like, I like this part of your regulation, I don't like this part, but you can probably get a pretty good sense of that from conversations. Is that true? Not true? I don't know.
Yeah, I would say we don't hear much, honestly.
And they've got suggestions. They, they know it inside and out, the people that are here on a regular, and I'm talking more the commercial end of things. And let them come in maybe on a work session today that we're already meeting anyway.
So I.
Sorry, no, I interrupted you.
So I guess I, I just think about the potential ways this could snowball, I mean, at least for me. Because if I'm going to invite developers in here to tell us about ways that we could make the regulations work better. I'm hearing from a particular set of interests and obviously it's the developers who have to deal with these regulations most often. On the other hand, these regulations also serve the purpose of protecting the public. And I, at that point, if I'm going to invite one group of stakeholders in, I'd also want to hear from the other stakeholders who are being protected by these regulations. And, and it starts getting very complicated.
I think the best case we can, in our recent experience that demonstrates the need to protect the public is what's happening on Chatteran Lane right now. Like the fact that, you know, that was proposed as a private road with private sewerage and there are all these questions about, well, isn't the town going to take this over? I can't find my connections. Like, you know, those are things that, you know, if we, if we want, you know, those are the types of things where we could have stronger requirements about locating connections for utilities, underground utilities, you know, on a, on a plan, that kind of thing.
And I think we did a pretty good job of updating our site plan review regulations without going through that process. I'm not against that process per se. I just, like I said, once we bring developers in, I'd want to balance that with the people who are also being protected. And we are going to have public hearings. You have to have public hearings.
I think it would be, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, go ahead, yeah.
I don't think it would be huge and maybe they may say, you know, I'll write a couple of notes if you could just. And it could be that they only take 10 minutes and then you would also invite anybody else who would like to speak on behalf of the public. And you may find that no one shows up. You just don't know. But at least when they're invited,
Yes.
They have that opportunity and that's the important part.
And it's not a very exciting topic for the public to get.
I mean, I don't, yeah, honestly, I mean, a lot of these regulations are to best make sure that we avoid a situation like what's happening on Chatteran Lane. I mean, somebody's, if, I mean, our sessions are open to the public, so everybody is always invited.
Although out of town developers wouldn't necessarily know because they're not, they're not being notified in their local. Although, I mean, so here's what I'm hearing right now. I'm hearing, yes, we should look at these. It's the opportune moment to do that. And as we start to kick off that process, we can continue to talk about how that process will look going forward. And yeah, I haven't fully thought it through. I appreciate you mentioning this idea and it might be a good idea and I'm, I think we should all just kind of think that through a little bit more. And as we start to get more into this, we can, like, if we want to get early feedback from certain groups, then maybe we'll do that.
And I don't think they're here to try and get the best of the town. I think they care about this town as much as we do and they're trying to add a ton of money. And then they're looking at it, do I go to Littleton, Lincoln? Do I go to Plymouth? And we want their dollars here. We want that development here. And we want to find out, what can we do? What, what do you suggest? Well, if you did this, you know, and they could talk about experiences where, where their clients went somewhere else. And if we knew what those reasons were and we could modify some things to capture some dollars, I think there's no lose situation there.
I agree. I would just, I would just add, I think a large part, I mean, sometimes I, I can imagine you look at the subdivision regulations perhaps and say, no, I don't want to deal with that. Usually it's a zoning issue, like you do or do not want to deal with someone's zoning. And the regulations just make sure all the I's are dotted and the T's are crossed in the process.
I mean, I think our job with the subdivision regulation is to balance not, I mean, our entire job is to balance being open to well-thought-out, well-planned development while also practicing, you know, just being very conscious of what, what development could potentially do to the town if it's not well-thought out. Because not all development is going to equal dollars for the town. You know, protecting open spaces also brings money to the town and also protects the tax base as well, so.
Well, I know a lot, a lot of that's in the zoning ordinance.
Right.
More than the regulations.
So I think, I mean, regardless of how far we go into public engage, I mean, there's always going to be, there's the basic public engagement of every work session. Public hearings for making, changing any of our site plan review or subdivision regs. The bottom line is there are some very baseline updates that need to happen to the subdivision regs to bring them up to current state law and current best practices since it's been 20 years, so.
I think to Mike's point, you know, getting some feedback from developers. Originally, when you brought that up, I was thinking about residential subdivision and I think I'm not really convinced we need to hear from too many developers on that front. But I do think that, you know, on the commercial development front and business, you know, business growth, I do think it would make sense to have a better understanding of what you know, engineers, civil engineers are dealing with as they look at, you know, site plan and zoning ordinance to use in our town. I think this, I mean, occasionally we might see subdivisions for commercial purposes, I think, and when I think of subdivisions, I think of like, you know, Chatteran Lane with, you know, 30 lots for houses going in. And zoning does affect that, but you know, I think commercial development, like what Mr. McGinley is doing is, I'm not sure subdivision's going to affect him too much in my thoughts.
I mean, he has gone through the subdivision process, but not a whole lot.
Minor. Yeah, minor. One or two lot things, right?
Peter Julia is also a good asset on this. Alternate, of course, but he does know quite a bit, has had some good insights in the process previously.
He might be great in trying to find some really good subdivisions, other examples in other towns and just what other towns are doing and how they're dealing with other issues.
Peter used to be out on that side, sitting there.
Yeah.
The subdivision process is extremely grueling before anybody even knows about it. We're in the process of two in two different towns now. The larger one is, we've, we started, I think it was almost a year ago, just doing the layout, just doing all of that. And of course, we've got the town's regulations and their subdivision, all their information. So as we're laying it out, so it's months and months. So the residential subdivisions, I think, I don't think it's a bad idea to pull some of those people in as well. But I do think you will get some public input as well, like the residents that are up on Chatterin Lane, for example. I think they may give us some really important input about what they were looking for when they were looking at subdivisions.
Yeah.
And of course, didn't get it. So it's important, but I think it definitely needs to be updated, looking at this and looking at what we're dealing with in these other towns. It's, it's, you know, it needs work.
Yeah. And if we have staff right now who's willing to jump on this, then I think that would be.
My, my question for developers is, you know, how much of the, the difficulty of laying out subdivisions is alteration of terrain? You know, things that, that we don't, we have no say over. I mean, there are state requirements, they have to, nothing, you have to consider those things when you're doing the engineering work of laying out roads and creating lots, right? But like.
And that's absolutely right. It's, it's, and it's just.
But that's something we have very little say over.
And once that is all said and done, all of that stuff, that's when you start laying out where you're act, how you're actually going to do things and that's when that comes into play.
I do think, you know, in my experience, you know, we had, I, we used to offer open space developments where you, you know, if you did a conventional plan according to whatever zoning was allowed in that district, if you wanted to do, we would allow a density increase. So like, you know, if you wanted to put, if it was a, you know, 60-acre partial, there's two-acre minimum lot size, let's say in theory, you could put 30 lots in, we would allow you to do like 31-acre lots with 30 acres of open space, which allowed the road to be smaller. You know, it's still, you still had to meet setbacks and, you know, fire separation distances and all that, but.
A little bit like our cluster developments.
Yeah, basically, it's same, same as the cluster, but I mean, in concept, I mean, I, I think that's in there already, but I forget. I mean, I haven't really looked at our subdivision regulations in quite a while, but.
I think also, I mean, we haven't seen a major subdivision.
No.
In the nine plus years I've been on the town. No, I think, I think we will.
A bunch of talk about various housing.
So, I think.
What's nice is that some of these developers are working with several different towns. They know what works really well and what doesn't. We only know Plymouth, except for Phil knows two towns.
Yeah, right.
I mean, I think we all bring a diversity of experience to the board through our professional and our personal lives, so.
Yeah.
The last cluster, open space subdivision we had is Crescent Street. I just don't think they're, it's in the regulations, but I just don't think it's been used since that was originally developed.
And that's just being built now. That's sat, sat approved, but unbuilt for years, right?
Oh, Crescent Street, that was the brothers.
Blacky.
Blacky.
I caught a reaction there that I.
I want to ask about.
I, I don't know the, I don't know that.
Oh, they're great people. They're very good people, yeah.
All right. Yeah, so that's, that's a recap then. So if we could just like, kind of, I think, not break our backs over, but just take a peek at the master plan again as we get ready to engage the public. And if we see anything in there that strikes us, we can take note of it and maybe for 2024 or something. So zoning amendments, if they come up, they come up, but I think, I guess we're not really going to be looking for them except for what comes out of the HOP process.
Yeah, and maybe the, in the legislative session right now.
Yeah. Oh, of course, yeah. Mandatory ones. And site plan review regulations should be fairly straightforward and just kind of push that through, I think. Never know, but it should be. And then subdivision regulations we'll work on with staff. And not quite done yet. So unfinished and other business. I think this is part of our packet, right? The 2022 planning board members list here. You might notice that two of us are slated to expire. Not, not in the, not in the really dark sense of that term.
It's service of the board.
Sorry. We're up for reappointment. So that would be myself and Mark.
Nice to go out with Christ on your side. Anyways.
Yeah, so April, we're up for, to be reappointed. And so I guess we have to write a letter to the select board. We do have to formally write a letter, right?
Yep, and that, you know.
Just changed the date on your.
Oh, the last one, yeah.
Recommend it's probably, you know, trying to get that in in March, so you're.
I, I, the only reason.
Or April.
The only reason I ask is I think the last time a bunch of us got reappointed, it came from, from June, she just wanted to restagger everyone and she, like, she sent like a blanket reappointment letter for everyone.
Maybe that's how I got a four-year term. I'm not sure, honestly.
I'm going to look into that and see what I can figure out.
Or, or I think I might have served the last year of somebody else's term and I think maybe Brian might have put in for my reappointment without, but I don't remember.
Yeah, but she, at some point, we were all kind of lumped together, so she tried to stagger us back out and sent like a.
I'm okay with that.
Do we get a different select board member or can Neil continue doing it? Is that?
That's up to them.
How does that work?
They, they kind of choose.
So he could do it if he wanted to continue.
Or if they wanted him to.
Yeah.
Yeah, so after the election, then they, the first meeting back, they then do their committee assignments.
I imagine they'll probably rotate again, but who knows? Yeah.
Chair usually dictates.
It depends on the outcome of this, the election. There might be challengers or.
I think too, the.
Zach and Mary Ann are up.
Any other business from anyone?
Reappointment letters, I can help get those in front of the select board. Hopefully, we can try to get those in March so we can have you reappointed before it gets to April and then, you know, just keep it sort of straightforward, not a, not a big deal. Pretty straightforward letter and we'll send it on.
And are there any public comments? Even Zoom looks pretty empty.
Yeah. Joseph, we're.
Yeah, nobody else on Zoom.
All right.
Oh, I would like to make a motion to adjourn.
I was wondering how long it was going to do.
Me? I was, I was spacing out a little.
And we wait, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Who seconded that?
Two.
Oh, all right.
I'm just not used to making a motion to adjourn so early.
Meeting adjourned, 7:42.
I do want.